I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Dangler?
Here.
Mr. Vieira?
Here.
Dr. Vo?
Here.
Dr. Sally?
There.
Mrs. Widdis?
Here.
I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the Urban Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
Thank you. Your first item was discussion about parking. I ask for this to be continued because we started a conversation about the oversized trucks parking on the streets of Long Branch as well as trucks that don't want or are from out of town. So I want to continue the discussion to, you know, find out what it is we can actually do about it and what you would like to do about it.
Well, we've definitely got to do something about it. I agree with that 100% because a lot of these intersections, they've got these large trucks and you can't see the traffic coming. And that happened to me a couple of weeks ago. So, I don't know if the lieutenant or the, I think the chief is not here.
Um, actually Corporal Cruz. How you doing? Corporal Cruz from the Traffic Safety Division. I'm in place of Lieutenant Charlie Shirley and Chief Kim Robach.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for coming.
You did not have to wear a bulletproof vest.
I didn't work right now, so I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss this, so.
Thank you. Do you have any recommendations as far as how, you know, maybe we can address the issue that we're concerned about? Because we're finding that the oversized trucks are parking and blocking intersections and, you know, plus some of the streets are not wide enough for those. And, uh, and we also have an issue where trucks are coming out of town. People don't live here, they're just leaving the trucks here for the weekend overnight and, uh, you know, using this as like they're stationary because they're not allowed in other towns. So those are my issues right now and I was just wondering if there's any suggestions or recommendations or...
As far as parking overnight, no oversized trucks can be parked overnight. There's ordinance in place for that. I know the guys have been enforcing that. As far as with, you know, out of towners coming in and blocking intersections and things like that, we take those as a case-to-case basis. If somebody calls and complains, we usually go out and we just address it right then and there. I know with, just as an example, just to use this example, when we use on Broadway, they always have a big large truck that comes in there and Broadway's not wide enough there and that's always an issue. So, I know from experience going out there, we have to just address that as it comes along because it's not always an issue depending on how much traffic is coming through. But, we can definitely sit down and do a study and figure out where the hot areas are for these trucks. I know the Long Branch Avenue's been an issue. We've had problems over there where there's a large truck that parks over there. We've addressed it, we've issued summonses there to them. And the thing is that they're different vendors, so they're not just the same person all the time. So they go over to the, like the Rubber Factory and those commercial structures over there. So, uh, as, the way we've been dealing with them is as a, you know, case-to-case basis. But, there is ordinance in place for certain timeframes and certain areas for those things and, like I said, usually when somebody calls and complains, we go in and we address it. But, we can definitely study the area and find out these trouble spots and come up with a solution to, uh, to better everything.
So, what, so, can I ask you, so, so, so the council knows in case they get called or they see. So what, what does the, what does the ordinance say? What can't you do?
Well, over certain weights depending on the type of vehicle, because there's so many different vehicles.
Right.
You know, we deal with boats on trailers, we deal with just regular, um, going up from, like landscaping trailers that are left unattended off a vehicle. There's so many different ordinances to put them all out here right now, I couldn't just, just spit them all out to you. But as we deal with them, we do research what applies to that vehicle. Sometimes we have vehicles that are 80,000-plus pounds that we're dealing with depending on what type of construction's going on or what they, how they serve whatever company. And as we deal with them, we look up the ordinance and we deal with them appropriately. Over, oh, so to answer your question about that, overnight, um, you know, there's an ordinance that says that after 9:00 PM, no commercial vehicles over a certain weight can be parked on the public street, especially ladder vans where you see the vans with scaffolding and different types of picks and things that are hanging off them. So we issue that. I know that specifically because I know we've issued a 325 yesterday.
So, is, so, commercial registry over a certain weight, that's, is that...
That, that's, that's one of them, yeah.
Okay. And what about just regular work vans, work vans that don't have ladders hanging on them?
As long as there's no, as long as they meet the weight requirements and there's no overhanging ladder from beyond the bumper, the front and rear bumper, then we don't have an issue with them.
But, I'm concerned too because like I said, there are certain towns that do not allow commercial vehicles to be parked on their streets and they're bringing them here into town and just leaving them.
Correct.
So, that's something that I've wanted to...
Well, it sounds like there's an ordinance though, so.
But it has to be oversized though. I'm talking about trucks that need to be oversized.
So, so, like I said, it's...
So you mean any commercial vehicle? So what's, I know, once again, I'm asking these questions so that we can, we can work out. So what's the, what makes it, what makes it have to be commercially registered?
Um, what happens is, is weight comes into play. It's over 8,000 pounds, I believe is the number. I can get you the exact statute if you want, if you want.
So do we ban any commercial?
No.
Vehicles?
No, no, no.
Okay, so, so we're different than the, well, that, and I think that's kind of the rest of the question, right? Which is, you know, we only ban commercial vehicles over 10,000 pounds, why can't we make it any commercial vehicle? So I think that's right, right? That's the question.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not looking to hurt people that live here on Long Branch or, you know, I'm, I just don't think that we should be the yard for vehicles that don't belong here. The businesses are not here, it's, you know, no one owns them, they're just leaving them here.
Right, right.
And I'm finding that's happening for the...
And in those cases, like I said, when we get those calls, we go out and we address them. You know, we issue the summons, we move them along, we get them out of here and we let them know. A lot of times we try to give, you know, obviously we try to give a break in the beginning. We don't want to just come off and just start, you know, unless we really have to. But, we document what vehicle it is, who the driver is and everything with that. We list it in our, in our systems so that we know if we deal with them again, they were already warned once. So then we go like and we issue the summons. We try to be, you know, courteous to them because their business is trying to just do their thing. But at the same token, we also have to address the fact that residents can't see where they're going, they don't create accidents and they're, they're a problem. So, as we deal with them, we've always dealt with them case-to-case cases. As someone called or we see the issue as we're patrolling the streets, then we deal with them accordingly. But like I said, there are ordinances in place that we use to, to address those issues, especially like trailers, untouchable vehicle, things like that. Or if you have like large oversized vehicles that are parked overnight or park blocking an intersection, regardless of the hour, we still address them. We move them along, we tell them, hey, you can't do this, we understand you have a business thing. We try to even work with the business owners to try to come up with some better solutions of where they can have a drop-off. Maybe they can bring a fork with a pallet from down the street up to where, to where the business is to avoid accidents and traffic issues. So, but like I said, case-to-case basis, as we deal with them, we, we, we go out and we, we deal with them right then and there.
Is it possible to, um, have citizens register their vehicles and they get stickers and we know that they belong here and, I mean, I'm just thinking...
I don't think, I think that if you ban commercial vehicles on city streets, you can't say it's only for out-of-town residents in the public streets.
We would have to, for an ordinance.
The answer is, well, no, no, you could pass an ordinance and you could say no commercial vehicle parking overnight on a public street, but you can't allow somebody who's a Long Branch resident to do it. And that's a problem that you have. You can't, you have to ban, if you ban it, then you ban it. And what's happening is that there's other towns that have banned it and now people are bringing their vehicles here. But, what's happening is that the Long Branch worker who works here is bringing their vehicle home as opposed to the one that works in Walcott. So, but what you can't do is say, well, because if it's a traffic safety issue for a commercial vehicle to be on a residential street overnight, then it's a traffic safety issue with a Long Branch resident or a not Long Branch resident. So I don't think that you can have permit parking that allows some commercial vehicles and not other commercial vehicles. You have to, you know...
Either ban it or...
Correct, correct. And that would mean that, you know, somebody who, and, and by the way, maybe that makes sense, maybe people shouldn't take home their work trucks and park them on residential streets in, in the city. Maybe, you know, because of the narrowness of the streets and for all of those reasons, maybe that's, that's the ultimate conclusion.
Well, I've been talking to some people, they've been addressing the same issue, the hot topic lately. And they said we have to, they're really pushing for us to ban them, the commercial vehicles. I mean, it's kind of hurt a lot of people. But, you know, like for example, I have a brother, there's a couple of brothers of mine that bring their work van. They would have to park in the driveway if they looked their car on the street, you know what I mean? So, they have to find a way to put it, you know, in the driveway and put the cars in the street or something like that, you know? That's who they'll have to work with. It's really giving a touchy point because a lot of residents we talk to around town are really getting fed up.
It's a quality of life issue, you know? You're, you're absolutely, you're absolutely correct, but, um, Corporal, can you think of any other, so let's assume that, that council wanted to get rid of the weight limit and just say no commercial vehicles parked overnight on city streets. Is there some, I always ask, is there some unintended consequence that we don't know about that's going to be an issue for us?
I mean, just from experience dealing with going to those calls, I mean, most of them, you know, that we deal with, a lot, a lot of the residents here have construction jobs and they bring their construction trucks home only because it's easier and that's their means of transportation to and from work. So, they need that commercial truck to get up 4:00 in the morning and just get out to reach to whatever job they're going to. I know that that could probably hurt them, um, you know? And that's from experience, anybody we've dealt with, like usually that I've dealt with out in the field, most of the people move them, they'll take them back to their construction company if it's an issue, if we have neighbors that are really upset about it. Uh, we, we, we kind of tread delicately with them because we know there's a need for them to make money, but at the same token, there's also a need for safety and to be conscious about what's going on in the neighborhood with that type of vehicle there, you know, for safety in public, you know, it's, it's like a double edged sword, uh, it's tough. So, I know from experience going out there and dealing with, uh, different commercial vehicles and, um, you know, like I said, it's, it's one of those things where in some cases it's definitely, it's got to be moved, you know? In other cases, like this is their livelihood and this is where they, they need that vehicle or they may not have a vehicle to, to go back and forth to work and that's what they use every day. So, it's, it's hard, you know?
Well, like Councilman Vieira said, you know, some people will park on their own property and put the cars on the streets which makes it, you know, not so hazardous. But like I said, there are people that will leave their cars during the day, you know, and pick up the trucks on the streets and then come back, get their cars and leave the trucks there and they don't belong here.
Correct.
So, I mean, it's definitely an issue and, you know, as we get more and more populated, I think it's, you know, going to be a real, real bigger concern, so.
So now that's a, now that's a, a different issue, right? So we were talking about an ordinance that said no commercial vehicles parking overnight. Now you just, well, I guess a commercial vehicle would be here over...
It'll be overnight.
Overnight, okay, good, okay.
Yeah.
Certainly that's a, so, I mean, we can move in that direction if, if you want. I don't know whether or not the department wants to propose some kind of stepped-up enforcement that maybe will get the, to get it done without changing the ordinance, but we certainly can change the ordinance to do that. And you're going to have those, you're, you're, look, I, I, I think that you're probably correct, you're going to have those situations and maybe we'll deal with them as they come and people will come in and say, look, I don't, I, I, my guess is if you're going to have a couple, first it's the, I don't have a driveway, so I can't, I, I would park it in the driveway, but I don't have a driveway, that's going to be the first one. The second one is going to be, I don't have another car, this is how I get back and forth to work. So I think that those are the two circumstances, right? That you're probably going to, if people who are going to complain, that's what the objections you're going to hear, so.
The largest that we find is like, we'll see, you know, flatbed tow trucks that come from other areas that maybe someone just gets their job and they bring, they start bringing the tow truck home. We issue tickets to them, they're not supposed to have that for weight reasons and because it's commercial overnight.
Sure.
We go into the, the ordinance for 325 and the issue summons and then we make a move it. But, the overnight trucks, I mean, businesses use different vendors and they switch them up without us knowing. So, we could have an 18-wheeler today that's parked on Long Branch Avenue, we don't even know where it came from, but it's, it belongs to something they work for, a business, and they can change vendors and then have a truck from somewhere else that comes in and doesn't know that we just already told this truck driver, you can't park there and we tell the businesses, hey, you can't have your trucks parked out here. And they deal with so many different people that I think that becomes the issue.
But I guess if we issue them tickets, it wouldn't matter.
They'll get the message.
They'll get the message, yeah.
Oh, they'll get the message.
Yeah, we do issue, we do issue.
No, but, but we have the ordinance, you know, no, no commercial trucks, period.
Now, anywhere or just in a certain zones? Are we talking about residential zones or anyplace?
I would think, well...
Are we talking about Street 2531? Is that the ordinance?
So...
Because it's 8,000 pounds, but it's a very small number of streets that are specifically listed.
Right.
So I'm assuming it's permitted in other locations.
Well, in a commercial setting probably, not, not a residential area though.
Okay. So, do you want it for the entire, so let's think about that, do you want it for the entire city? Because if there's a strictly commercial area, do you want to ban them also?
Most of the businesses have parking, parking...
Yeah, Corporal, you know what I mean?
There, there is a limitation to parking of commercial vehicles on residential property as well.
There, that's a zoning limitation, right?
Yes.
Right. I thought, I thought, right.
How would you like to proceed?
Why don't we do a...
I thought we had commercial overnight forbidden.
No.
At least uptown.
In some places, but apparently that's a weight limit, so it's only trucks over 8,000 pounds. Give, give it, Corporal, give us an idea, what's, what's over 8,000 pounds, what's not? Like a Ford F-150 is not over...
Well, yeah, it's gross vehicle weight is what's tagged on the vehicle tag. They could put anything in there really.
No, but I'm saying there's gross vehicle weight, what, what, I'm just trying to, a box truck is over 8,000 pounds, but it's a pound weight.
Like an 8,000-pound vehicle could be a van, you know, that could be 8,000, 1,000 pounds right there.
Well, there's most of the people, uh, the construction companies, they know what the limits are.
Mm-hmm.
When they go to motor vehicles, they just stay on the need for the weight.
Right.
When they register a vehicle.
So have you made it known?
And even with those weights, they can still add, you know, 1,000-pound machines inside the back of them, so you're really over the weight anyway.
Correct.
We don't have balances we can bring out.
Correct.
Is there any way we can research other communities who have initiated a ban and to see what, you know, what those results were, how it's working now, what some of the issues were and so forth? I mean, I don't know, that'd be something, that'd be something we could find out about.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good, Danny?
Sure.
Let's, let's do the research and we'll put on to the next one.
Okay.
But, but for now, you know, one of the takeaways is we can't change the ordinance, but right now there are ordinances, there's zoning ordinance and there is a traffic ordinance. So if you see a box truck, you know, parked overnight, call, they'll, they, right now they get a ticket on. And a van that has, as the mayor's talked about this before, the ladders that extend past the bumper, those are, those are all things that are currently under the current ordinance, so the police department could issue tickets for those right away.
Okay, we'll leave it at that then.
Thank you so much.
Well, definitely, you know, we can do a study on our end too to find out the trouble spots and, and report them too to find out, you know, so you kind of have an idea what we're dealing with. Is there, I said, I know right off the top of my head, just driving around, I know the areas where we tend to find 18-wheelers parked there and it's always an issue. And then we're constantly, they're issuing tickets or even areas where we know that, you know, sometimes they're in and out quickly and it doesn't really bother anything, but the businesses are happy because they're getting their deliveries and, you know, but we're also concerned about safety also. So, if we can conduct a study on our end to find out what the hotspots are, that we can, we can kind of bring that to you and we can see if that's something that maybe we want to address just those specific areas? Or, you know, if you make it citywide, I think you're going to have the issue where you have, you know, people that really rely upon that not being in effect, that's going to affect them, I think that's what we're at.
Is there a separate issue of, because you also have to have, I guess, designated truck reps? Is there an issue with tractor trailers on residential streets or do you have ordinances in place that protect sufficient?
Well, if you have a moving truck that comes in and someone wants to move their house and, you know...
No, that's a different, no, you're, you're usually exempted, but if, you know, if you see a residential street, is that an issue or if, I, I'm...
Well, there are certain streets, to tell you exactly which streets they are and there's, there's for-ton ratings for streets.
Right.
From weight limits, that trucks are not allowed to go down those streets.
That's what I'm saying, so you do have those.
Yeah, so there are some of those, yeah.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
So we'll, we'll readdress this and, um, I think you're going to need some time.
If you allow us to conduct a study on our end, we can come back with some better information as far as where that goes.
What do you think is the reason why it's for as a time, I mean, that when you could come back?
Like I said, I'll have to talk to my boss and then we'll, we'll, I'll sit down and speak with him and let him know what the concerns are here. Like I said, I'm filling in for them.
Yeah, okay.
So all I'll do is I'll, you know, I took some notes here, I kind of know what your mindset is with this and what you're looking to do. I'll relay that to my boss and he can relay that to the chief and then we can come up with something and get this as fast as possible.
Good, good.
Thank you so much. Thanks. And the next item is the, um, I asked for an update on the website and we played amp.
Lindsay, you want to come on up and join the conversation? She's doing all the heavy lifting on these projects. But I did talk, I met with Lindsay yesterday and we talked about the progress on the two items. Website, 95% done, is accurate. Working at a July 8 launch date, so it's right around the corner. What's holding us up right now is coordinating training sessions with basically four of our departments, just getting it lined up where the department rep, RIT people, and the vendor can all be available at the same time. Training's done well?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And people are being instructed on how to update their department's page. We want to take some of this, the tedious work of updating phone numbers, staff names and such off of our IT people. We're not exempt to be, you know, web designers just to update some very basic information and keep it current. So, we're, we're getting closer. And again, July 8th. The one thing Lindsay did inform me about is that everything won't be as it, as we want that to be as far as some of the data. We're transferring agendas in minutes. They may not all be in place. I'm sure you've all gone on the websites and say certain items are under construction. We'll have some notation that some things are still being worked on, but we don't want to wait until everything is perfect. We want to get this thing up and running, get people used to it. There was one item that we thought we needed your input relatively quickly on and you don't have to weigh in totally tonight, we give you time to, to deliberate, but it was suggested that we change our website name. Right now we're visitlongbranch.com. EvoGov thought it was more appropriate that we get a .org to show that we're not a commercial website, that we are, you know, in an organization. It's not .gov, we're going with .org, which is probably more common.
Yes.
I believe under municipalities. The county's website, I noticed I went on to look because I've always looked them up as visit Monmouth. You can put visit Monmouth in, it automatically transfers over and I think it's co.monthouth.us nj, which nobody's going to remember to put it in. Longbranch.org, we have the rights to it?
Yes.
And, so it's available and what we can do, and the, the vendor said would be easy, it's just like the county does, if someone still goes back to the old link, it'll automatically transfer over. That's how the county's is working now.
And we can basically do that forever. So any old marketing materials that we have that say visitlongbranch.com, it'll always send them to longbranch.org if we change it. And our email addresses are longbranch.org, so it's all going to be the same, it'll be consistent, so I think it's a good idea.
And the other, the other source of confusion, and I do find this when I look for other municipalities, is when you just put in the name of the town, you will often get a visit Belmar, visit another town and visit Highlands and it's a Chamber of Commerce or a commercial type of website. You go down, then you find the official website for the municipality. So, we, we think it's better to get the right one so people know what to look for. So, let us know if you're all in agreement now, we'll proceed. If you'd like to have a secret ballot, we'll have a secret ballot. Everybody thinks that's a good idea?
Yep, yep.
All right, we got something accomplished.
So, what did you say, each department will be responsible for maintaining their own page?
We will construct the pages.
Right.
But, for example, in our, in ours, if we have something to go on to change a phone number or if the building department lists their staff and they have a change of personnel, we want that updated. We don't want to put it all on our IT people to monitor all these different pages. We've got a lot.
Yeah.
We've got a lot going on.
So...
Jake's, Jake's unit, if they have some change, his people will have the ability to go on and make changes, not in design.
Right.
But in some of the content, informational content.
Okay, but, um, the departments, individual departments have the responsibility for keeping their pages updated within the design line?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to clarify that.
Sounds right?
Yeah.
George, if you don't mind, Lindsay, can you just describe what the capabilities of the website would be as opposed to what we had before and the goal of, of why we're doing this?
Sure, so...
Just talk about some of the features.
So visually, um, right when...
Is that a microphone on the windows?
It is. It's on.
It, is it on?
It's on.
Oh, okay.
So visually, right when you go onto the new website, there's a lot more pictures and a lot more images of around Long Branch, so immediately when you go to the new one, you just have a different feel. For usage and how users are going to use it, it's, um, our goal is to make it easier to navigate. So, we kind of condensed, um, at the top, I think we have a government tab, a departments tab, contact us, and we kind of make it easier for people as soon as they get on the page to find exactly where they want to go. So navigating is really important to us. Also, when you scroll down to the bottom of the page, it has all of our social media. The layout of the announcements is a lot easier to navigate through. Right now, as you know, with our page, all the announcements are kind of just like right there on our page and it's a little bit overwhelming at times, so that'll be easier as well. The calendar hopefully will be fully up and running by July 8th, but if not, that's another example of something that's going to be a work in progress where Dana will be putting her events, we'll be putting the different meetings up there and that hopefully will be a nice feature for residents too, that they're going to be able to go on there and see exactly, you know, what is on each, each date. Will that include the brush and the bulk pickup days as well on the calendar? So that it's very...
And then it also has the capability of more interactive features with residents, right? Can you talk about expanding upon that or...
Yes, so there's going to be a contact us form where we're working on that right now, where residents can go right to the contact form, put in their name, their, their last name, their email, a drop-down to pick the department, exactly which one they're trying put in their name, their, their last name, their email, a drop down to pick the department, exactly which one they're trying to reach, um, and then kind of put in their concern. And that is going to be navigated to whoever the department head chooses. Uh, it can also go to multiple people in the department, so it can go to the department head and someone else that's designated to respond back to that person. But our goal is to have something right at the top that's either going to say, report a concern or contact us, or something that jumps out right away that if someone's going to our website with maybe a problem, they know right away, they can click that and, and get in touch with someone.
Is there a complaints database that goes to, so somebody's tracking, so the department gets a complaint about a pothole? That somebody knows that the department is reacting to that so that you're, you know, then two weeks later the mayor goes and get an email that says, I, two weeks ago I sent the public works, there's a pothole, I haven't heard from anybody. Is there, does, does that copy to somebody else? Is there some, is there a way that you're tracking?
So there, there is a service that is available called three one one and Mr. Jackson and I have been kind of going back and forth about if we want to keep the three one one service or go back to the regular contact form that I just explained to you. Um, so it's in between the two. We do have the possibility to have what you're talking about where we can go back and track the complaints. But at this time, we've kind of been going back and forth if we want to use that right away or kind of have a more simpler version where people can just go right on, uh, pick the department they're trying to reach, put in a text box exactly what their issue is. It gets sent as an email and then someone will respond back to them.
The three one one requires an account or a password?
Yeah, so the three one one, when you, if we, if we want the three one one option, um, you click on it, you have to make a username, you have to make a password. There's a lot more fields to fill in. Like I said, this is still an option that we could do, but discussing with Mr. Jackson as well as Will and Alex, um, and, you know, the collaborative effort of all of us, we kind of going back and forth, are people really going to make the username and password? Or is their goal really that if they want to know, um, what our bulk and brush schedule is, will they just more likely click on, contact someone? I want someone to respond back to me and fill out those couple of forms? Or are they going to make the username, password and go through all those other fields? Which like I said, we can bring that on later, but for a launch date of July eighth, we may just have the contact form up for, at this time and explore other options.
Right, I was saying, you can include pictures, it'll give you GPS coordinates, but.
Yes.
You know, I, I, I think we're, we're getting to the point where it's going to, it's going to create more work than problem solving.
Right.
I, you know, it's the old KISS theory. If we keep it simple, I, I think we'll get more useful information from people. Personally, if I say I have to create an account, I move on. Unless it's something I really need, I just don't want more passwords anyway. I think most people with these stuffs, I think they'll go. And I've, and I've also seen systems and, uh, I guess it's an STL platform or portal that if you're the, that everybody's instructed, so you're, you're, once again, your public works, somebody writes, uh, you know, there's a broken curb in front of my house. The employee who gets that puts that into the system as a complaint. So it's, so then the next employee goes and fixes it, puts in, got this complaint. Now they go into that complaint and they put in, they fix it so that when that resident calls up and says, are you ever going to come and fix it? You or you or you or whoever the administrator is can look at it and say, you called on this day, it got fixed on that day. Somebody went out, years went out, you know, you kind of have a running track of all of it. Especially when you're dealing with, you know, potholes are, are kind of easy, but sometimes you have, you have longstanding, you know, issues in a neighborhood where somebody's calling repeatedly and it's good to have a track of, you know, public works talk to them and engineering talk to them and I talk to them and Nick talk to them and George talk to them. So you can see how, how a problem is handled. So that's a, that's a next level, but that's not really a website issue.
Yeah, but it's the responsibility of the employees to enter, to enter the data, not, not the person who.
Yeah, it's the way you track, it's like, it's the way, like tracking work orders.
It's like a work order.
Yeah, so that's the way you track.
Yeah, good.
But I mean, the whole idea is to make the website more user friendly.
Right.
To have these capabilities if we want them and to just, uh, you know, enable residents to, whatever their concerns are, to, to be able to address hopefully right from their home.
Right, right.
Yes.
How, um, this is wonderful that this is happening. Are we going to, how are we going to announce it or make it aware to the public? You know, I mean, I don't know, there's a demonstration at council meeting or a, a launch party? Sounds good to me. No, but, but something to, I mean, it's a nice accomplishment.
Yeah, yeah, I, I mean, we, we have the signs around town. Um, you know, and I don't know how heavily trafficked our website is. The one thing I think is what, it'll be more navigable, it's going to be not as busy. And that is the way government websites are going. They have far fewer categories across the top.
Yeah.
And when government websites first started popping up, they've condensed a lot of these into easier ways to find what you're looking for. And I tell you, when you go on some sites, you'll find what you want. You go back to try to find it a week later, you can't remember how you got there. It's too confusing. I just did a quick look. On our homepage, we probably have forty-five different choices just up and down the side. They're random, you know, it's, it's in, I've seen other towns where they list everything. It's, it's indefinite, it just runs.
No, I mean, just something very brief. I don't know if that a, a first of announcement or a council meeting.
We'll put it on Facebook.
Yeah, well, we'll put it on all our social media. We'll announce at the next council meeting. Um, you know, we'll, we'll definitely get the word out.
But it's a good part, I mean, it's a good point.
Yeah.
How do we get the word out and let them know about it?
Yeah.
Part of the whole thing.
Yeah, and part of it will be the fact that we're changing the, you know, the website as well, you know, also, people will see that. Okay?
Great.
Any other questions? And then, we have the handbook?
The handbook, I have Lindsay here with us again tonight. I know she's been working diligently on this.
Oh, can I, can I just say one more thing about the website? I do want to say thank you to Will and Alex for working so hard on this website. So I think you guys are really going to enjoy the end product, but they definitely, I know I'm here tonight, but they get a lot of kudos for it.
And the vendors were pretty good?
Yep.
Where, where is he? Denver?
He's in Denver.
Yeah, okay, but it works.
Yep.
Uh, the other is the handbook. Um, as you know, this was a, a thing that we really need and Lindsay's been working on it. She's been working with Lou. We have a few policies that we're tightening up. I, last night I read through some drug policies and I have one that I'll show you that I think I prefer. We have a few others that we have to make some decisions on, of what versions we feel would best fit for our workforce. But how far along do you think we are outside of those?
Well, there's about four outstanding policies that I think one Lou and I are discussing and then the three that we are. But it's around seventy pages right now and it's, you know, basically as close to complete as it, as it can be. Just with those few outstanding policies that we're just discussing.
And, and before it's actually put into place, we will, and we've talked about it, share it with all of the unions. Though it says, you know, pretty clearly that it doesn't override any contract, you know, Phil's familiar with this, you know, it's, it's, it fills in all of the other policies. But we always like to run it through them because it just, it's, it's easier rather than putting it in effect and then if they have questions, going back and changing it. So we, the last thing in the process will be when we're all done with that, that we'll share it with all of the union heads, get some comments from them and then. As well as all of you. Yeah, as well as everybody here and then, and then ultimately it'll be circulated so all of the employees will have the sign that they got it.
Will there be like a workshop for the employees to go over some of the things that might be a little?
Well, the union employees, they'll work through a union that, you know, will do it, let them work through a shop steward and work through it. And then obviously, the other employees, non-union employees have, have access to it. I, I know we'll have discussions with our department heads. Um, I think we'll have to have some philosophical conversations about how some of these apply, uh, some of the changes that are put in place. Not everybody's going to be happy with everything, rarely are we, but there's some things that we, we feel we've had many discussions that need to be brought up to speed.
So, so there have been policy changes?
We don't have policies.
There are no policies.
I thought, yeah, that, I.
There are no policies.
There are no policies.
I thought I heard public, the word public.
Well, the answer is, the answer is there are no policies, so.
Okay.
So there are many things left up to interpretation.
Okay.
So the answer is, is that in, in some respects, all of this is a policy change because there are no policies.
Okay.
So there are some things, there's a couple of different categories. There are some policies that have been going on for years that will now become written policies and updated to what the current status of the law is. There's those. There are some where there simply have been, never been a policy, that they'll now be written policies. So that's a part and part. And there may be some circumstances where there are changes of policies, yes.
Practices.
Practices, yeah, yeah, practices, yep.
So Lou, if you don't mind, Lindsay or George, can you explain again, we haven't had a employee handbook and why that's critical and important to have?
So, I'll give you the first, the first circumstance. So there's the New Jersey law against discrimination. Bans things like gender discrimination, sexual harassment in the workplace. You don't have a policy. The law essentially says that they could, that, that as an employer, you have to have a policy and you have to follow it. You have to have a policy that establishes where a complaint is made. It has to have two areas, two places where you can make a complaint. It has to establish what's, you know, give a, uh, employees an idea as to what's not permitted conduct. So you don't have a written policy now. So if you get sued for harassment, defending the law sort of becomes problematic because you don't even have a policy and there's nowhere for somebody. Now, it doesn't mean that over the years, people haven't had complaints and they haven't made them to somebody and they've been handled, but you've never had a policy. You know, so all of those standard policies, you probably, you're a corporate employer, you do too, that you see and, you know, they don't exist. They're, the, there's, the drug testing policy doesn't exist. The, you know, when you can use your vacation time, how you notify your folks. Those kind of things don't exist. And the problem is, is that some of these things are covered for the union employees, they're covered in their, their contract. Like who you call out sick, who's called sick, but for non-union employees, there isn't, there isn't a policy. So it's, you know, it's problematic to go to discipline employees for being late five days in a row and there's not a policy on absenteeism. Policies on computer usage, policies on social media. I mean, it's seventy pages long.
Yeah, but are, are you pretty much using the words policy and practices as interchangeable?
Just so you know, George said practice, but it's not practice. What's happened now is because there's no written policies, all you have is, well, the last time this happened, this is how we handled it. That's a practice.
Okay.
You're going to have a policy. A policy is something that is established. This is not, there's no such thing as a practice manual. Practice is, in the past, we always handled it this way, so we're going to continue to handle it that way. That's, let me tell you what that is, not a good practice. That's what that is. So you're supposed to have, these are, all of these items are supposed to be written policies. So, and that's what, that's what you should have. And there are, but there are some things, like your drug testing policy is the one that we've been talking about the most, that you don't have for anybody. There's an attorney general's policy for police officers, but you don't have one for anybody else. So you have a federal policy for CDL drivers, but you don't have any, you have safety sensitive employees here and you have no drug testing policies. So you have to have those policies.
Lou or George, I'm speaking to the union funds we.
Yeah.
Looked over. Because there is no real policies in place, they, the unions pretty much would have to understand that. We're not violating the, you know, the contract and whatever is going on. So they have to respect the fact that this is the city's policy.
Sure.
Like we do with the county. The county comes out with a policy. If it's not in violation about our, like, for example, I come in late. So my boss lets me work through my lunch to make up that half hour or hour that I was late. Well, our policy is if you're late, you use whatever time, but you are not working through your lunch.
Right.
Basically means I'm going to come in late whenever I want to, because I can sit at my desk.
And eat my lunch.
And, and work. So our policy might say, no, there's no, you come in late, you use the appropriate time, but working through lunch is not appropriate.
So, so that, and that's an interesting example. So that's something you could actually negotiate. But the adoption of a, you could negotiate in a union contract that if you're not fifteen minutes late, you're not penalized, right? You, that you can negotiate. But the, the having a sexual harassment policy is a non-negotiable management prerogative. A union can't negotiate with a manager about whether or not we have sexual harassment policy. So those are, those kind of policies are our policies, right? They're, they're not in, you'll never find one of those in a, in a, in a collective bargaining agreement. You might find stuff about absenteeism and stuff. Uh, and generally, a lot of our contracts have some of that language in. But you have to, you, I mean, you have to have these policies. It's, you know, it's. You need a guy. It's two thousand and nineteen. You just can't wing it and say, well, how did we do it last time?
Yeah.
Because you may have been doing it totally wrong. The employees need a, a way to find, just like Lou said. Within the past week, got an inquiry from one of our insurance providers asking about a policy on how to report a certain type of incident. We don't have it. That's, and the, the message was, if you provide that policy, it's, it's good for us to defend ourselves that someone, if they, if we have the policy, did they take advantage of it? We don't have the policy for that person to have taken advantage of. If you want someone to report certain types of conduct, if you're going to hold them accountable for that, that's one of the things of the drug policy. There are certain accountability items that are listed. If you're aware, if you're a supervisor and you're aware of certain things going on.
Sure.
You are obligated to report it.
As you know.
We don't have a policy for that. So we're. And there, and, and, and you know, and, and there's, a lot of this is just informative for the employees, right? So if I think that I need surgery, what's the family medical leave policy, right? So it's not, this is not all something that's tied to discipline. This is the, so what do I do, right? So if I, I need to notify, I need to notify HR, I need to fill out this form, I, this is how many weeks I get. A, a lot of it is stuff that, you know, we should, employees just need to know. I mean, it's a, it's policies and it's a handbook. So the handbook part of it is, it's kind of explains to employees what, you know, what's expected of them and, and what, you know, what benefits and that come with being.
Well, the reality is an employee handbook benefits everyone and not us.
Correct.
Yeah. How long you been working on that? Just to give you a kind of some idea for, for the while, man?
Yeah, probably since like December.
So will, um, so will it also be online? Will it be on the website just?
Yeah, I don't know if we would put it as something in our regular. So do you have a, do we have a separate, that's an interesting website. We don't have a separate like employee website.
No, and that's something that we could visit where we could have an employee website where that would probably more, be more appropriate, not more.
On the, on the police side, I think the way the corporal probably would tell you, I think that they probably in their system, that it'd be something that would be in their system that they could access online, would be my guess. Do you get all your SOPs online?
Yeah, we get them through Power DNS.
Yeah, it would all be. On your phone, right?
We put in Power DNS. Well, and every new employee would automatically get that.
Yeah.
And have a sign for it.
Yeah.
Sign for it.
They'll get a hard copy, but we also had, where we came from, we had an employee website. The employees go log in. We had vehicle usage policies, we had health insurance information, um, FMLA information, we had forums on it.
And kind of forums, so had all information.
But it's a public, it's a public, the answer is, it's a public document. It's promulgated by the mayor and his partners have already, but it's a public document. You need it. We need it. Well, it's, it's just, you know.
But one thing, uh, kind of county, of course we have the county website.
Sure.
But also when we're, when we need to look, the union or our bound, need to look for different policies and such, we totally go to the county intranet instead of the county internet. This way, you know, all that stairs, the tabs are there. Just look up and like I say, hey George, this is what it says. So why are we, why are we meeting with you about this? Because it says I could do it. But I have it right off of the county website.
Does our, does our.
But it is intranet, it's not the internet.
Does, does our payroll system have the ability that employees can log in and get, and see their earnings and see all that stuff that we do? Do we have?
Yeah, so I don't know, can we put that large of a document on PrimePoint?
It's only a page if you want it.
Yeah, I, I think it's.
Well, I just don't know whether you can relate to it.
Possibly.
So add its own employee, so that, that's kind of like our, so you, you, you log in to where it is and there's a click to a link to.
To employee services or?
Yeah, to, to the handbook.
Yeah.
You might, you might be able to do that. So that an employee can have access to it kind of anytime, because they're not going to carry, they're going to lose it. They're not going to have it with them when they really need it.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
The next item is review of regular union agenda. Is there any more questions?
No questions, but I'm like one twenty-nine taken by itself.
One twenty-nine? Okay, I need a motion to adopt the resolution, fill in the second section.
One more.
The second. In favor?
Yeah.